Dr. Mink, are you able to hear me?
Now I can hear everybody. I couldn't a while ago.
All right.
We're, we're, we're ready. We're broadcasting.
Thank you. Um. I believe that's Counsel Denton. Can you please use your, your microphone?
TV.
All right, time is now six thirty-three. Like to call the meeting to order. Thank you to everyone who's joining us virtually again. Tonight, this is our reorganizational meeting for this year. I have appointed our city attorney to serve as the cloak pro tem for tonight's meeting while we are still searching for our new city clerk. Counsel was notified of that via email earlier today, so everyone should be on the same page. Madam Attorney, can you please proceed with roll call?
Yes, Mayor Gore. Counselor Randolph.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Counselor Holloway, I think her microphone is muted. I'm not sure she's able to do that.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Parton.
Here.
Mayor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham.
Counselor Pelham, please unmute your microphone. Can you hit it again, please? You've been on and off.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
All members are present. Mayor Gore.
Thank you. As stated, tonight is our reorganizational meeting. We'll go over the rules shortly after we adopt the agenda and move into the special meeting section of the agenda. So is there a motion to adopt or amend the agenda?
So move.
Motion's been made by Counsel Pelham. Seconded by Counsel Denton. It's now before council. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pelham.
And then portion that says we need to go into closed session. I believe that's not appropriate after we've gotten a judge order not to do, speak about the mayor and vice mayorship closed session according to the lawsuit that we had.
Yes, that is correct. I don't know why this was put on here. So council can always make the decision to remove the closed session item from the agenda.
Well, I'll make that. If there's something else we need to talk about, but based on that we need to delete that part of the agenda.
Mr. Altman or Vice Mayor Bennett, is there a reason why the closed session is on the agenda other than?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Given the conversations that were happening regarding potential short-term possibilities for clerk, it was put on there given that we didn't know if there would be a closed session or not. That's why it says if needed. If council doesn't want to have clothes, you don't need to go and close, but it was put on there in case you needed to go into clothes to discuss an item.
Counsel Pelham, do you want to amend your motions to remove the closed session because we didn't discuss how to close this agenda?
Yeah. Yes. No, I don't want, I just. I meant to say we're going to close sessions after the. Only we go in after we do the business of the organizational meeting and we have to discuss the clerk.
Um, Counsel Pelham, we don't have any updates for the clerk section for tonight, and also we don't do it afterwards. So I can't make motions. So can you please amend your motions to remove the closed session and then I'll ask Counsel Denton if she's fine with removing it as well?
All right. I made that motion to remove it, didn't I?
No, you said to put it at the end.
Okay. I like motion to. I take, make the motion to delete it totally from the agenda.
Thank you. Counsel Denton, are you fine with that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You have a friendly amendment. Well, not friendly amendment. The motion's been adjusted to reflect that we're adopting the agenda minus the closed session portion. Moved by Counsel Pelham, seconded by Counsel Denton. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Parton.
Yes.
Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counsel Pelham.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to skip down to the next portion of the agenda. We don't need to do roll call from my understanding because we are not reconvening. We'll have the prayer by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Charles Dane, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, United States of America. I'll do it this time since there's no name up here. Mr. Dane?
Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for getting us through the difficult year that we just experienced. As you renew us each day, we ask that you renew this body, this elected body and this government to continue forward and keep our citizens from harm's way as much as possible as we transition through and hopefully out of this pandemic. We ask for your blessed, continued blessings on our community, on our elected officials, on our public safety officers, and on our citizens of hope. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to special meeting item SB one. Moving on to the appointment of the mayor in accordance to Chapter four, Section four of the city charter. Before we start this process, I'm going to ask the city attorney to provide a brief summary of the process and the rules so that everyone is on the same page. I will ask if you have any questions during that time to please use your hand symbol so we're not talking over one another and everyone's able to hear. Before I pass over to Ms. Robinson, I do see a hand from Counsel Pelham. Counsel Pelham? Okay, she lowered it. I think that was, I think I answered your question.
Why?
Ms. Robinson, can you please go over the process for council?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Gore, members of council, tonight is your organizational meeting during which you will elect your president of council, ex officio mayor, and your vice president of council, ex officio vice mayor. The clerk will call the nominations and the vote for the president of council. Upon the election of that individual, that individual will take over, accept the nominations and, and call the vote for the vice president of council. At the conclusion of the election, we will just then proceed to our, our next item of business. In the event that there is no majority vote relative to either candidate or either nominee, the council can elect to adjourn the election to the next regular meeting or to another meeting prior to the regular meeting to continue the election process. In terms of the processes that will be utilized by the clerk, nominees will be accepted from the floor and voted on in the order that they are received. And the first, again, the first nominee receiving the nomination by majority vote will be declared the winner for that particular office. Are there any questions?
I had a hand up for a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not so much as a question, but one of the counselors has their TV on and it makes it hard to hear what other people are speaking. So if you are in a room or adjacent to a room that has a TV on, please mute it because I am hearing more of that TV than I am what you're saying. So that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Counsel Randolph. I go in the same sentiment. I appreciate that. Counsel Pelham?
I just have my hand up for nomination.
Okay. If there's no questions, the only point of clarification I have is the majority vote is four in this instance?
That's correct, Mayor Gore.
Okay.
And so if, if there are no more questions, what I'd like to do is announce that nominations from the floor are now in order for the office of president of council, ex officio mayor.
Can you see our hands up?
Ms. Robinson, hit the participant tab on the screen. You'll see that three people have their hands up at this time.
Yes, ma'am. So I believe Counsel Pelham announced her hand was up prior to the opening of the floor. In view of that, I'm just going to presume she was the first one with her hand up. If anyone objects to that, please announce that at this point. Counselor Pelham?
I would like to nominate Jasmine Gore.
Counselor Pelham has nominated Jasmine Gore. Vice Mayor Bennett, you're the next sequentially in line. Were you the second one with your hand up?
Yeah. She was.
So help me understand what we're doing. Are we voting on all of them at the same time after they've all been nominated?
Yes.
No, what we will do is we will accept nominations until there are no further nominations. And then we will take, we will vote on them in the order received. So if that was what you were asking, I didn't quite clear it. That's where we're going to proceed.
There is no need for a second on each nomination?
That's correct. There's no need for a second ever.
Right. Thank you.
All right. The next hand I see up, I did ask aloud regarding, I thought Vice Mayor Bennett had her hand up, but it's, your hand is up. Counsel Randolph?
Yes, but I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Bennett.
Counselor Randolph has nominated Vice Mayor Bennett. Are there any further nominations for office of president of council?
Yes. This is Counsel Holloway. I would like to nominate Brenda Pelham.
Counselor Holloway has nominated Counsel Pelham. Are there any further nominations for the office of president of council, ex officio mayor? Going once. Going twice. Hearing no further nominations for the president of council, those nominations are now closed. Is the body ready for the vote?
Do we have to, Madam, Madam Clerk Attorney, do we have to make a motion to close the nominations as, as presented?
No, ma'am. The, the person who's calling the clerk in this instance has asked for further nominations and hearing none has closed the nominations.
Okay, thank you.
The first nominee subject to vote is Jasmine Gore. All those in favor of Jasmine Gore for president of council, say yes or aye.
Can you raise it?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is going to get a little cumbersome since that we're dealing with this remotely and I can't see faces. So we might want to just do a roll call if no one has an objection. Okay, so the roll call for all of those in favor for Jasmine Gore serving as president of council. Counselor Randolph?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
No.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
She's still muted?
Yes, I was muted. No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
The ayes have it, I mean, excuse me, the noes have it for that nomination fails. Question to the council, do we proceed to the vice mayor position or do you want to have another nomination relative to the president of council?
Both. What about the other two nominations?
We had Vice Mayor Bennett.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're correct. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
As I, pardon me. The second nominee that is subject to vote for the office of president of council is Vice Mayor Bennett. We're going to proceed with a roll call. Counsel Randolph?
Yeah.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
No.
Counselor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
The ayes have it, four to three. Vice Mayor Bennett has been elected to that position. She can now assume the floor and govern the vote for the vice president of council, ex officio vice mayor. Thank you.
You.
Hello, everyone. I am going to move forward with SB two. And I don't know if I have the controls. I'll just go ahead and view it on my tablet. All right, we're down to SB two. And the floor will be open to appoint the vice mayor in accordance with Chapter four, Section four A of the city charter. Hands that are up. The first hand I see is Counsel Pelham?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jasmine Gore.
Thank you. Counselor Randolph?
I don't have my hand up, do I?
You have your hand up.
I do? Sorry, that was from last time, but I can't, hang on, I got to take it down. Oops, yes, that's from last time. But I'll, I'll nominate. Go ahead.
Continue.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I will nominate Johnny Parton.
Are there any nomination, other nominations at this time? Okay. The floor is closed for nominations. I'm going to ask that the city attorney who's acting as clerk right now would please do a roll call for the first nomination, Counselor Jasmine Gore.
Yes, ma'am. This is for the nominee Jasmine Gore by Counsel Pelham. Counsel Randolph?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
No.
Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
The noes have it. The nominee is not elected to the position. Calling the vote for the nomination of Johnny Parton by Counsel Randolph. Counselor Randolph?
Since I'm nominating him, I, I say yes.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore, excuse me, yeah, Counselor Gore?
No. Okay.
It's hard to get you to.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote, Counsel Gore.
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
No.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
The yeses have it. The nominee is elected to the position of vice president.
Congratulations, both of you.
Okay, we're going to move down now to SB three. This will be the to establish city council regular meetings for 2021 and dates for special meetings and work sessions pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen two dash fourteen sixteen.
I'll make a.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to maintain our regular meetings for the second and fourth Tuesday of each month with the exception being August to meet, to meet once, I think in August and December.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, 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 I don't, yeah, I don't want to do the other ones. It's too, too, too convoluted to put all that stuff together. That's just my motion to make the regular meetings the same as they were last year. And I believe we met every, twice a month on the second and fourth Tuesday, except for the months of July, August, and December.
Madam City Attorney, do you have that motion?
Ma'am, as I, I wrote it down, is moved to maintain the regular schedule of meetings for for this first and second Tuesday with the exception of August and December is what I have. Is that correct?
Second and, second and fourth Tuesday with the exception of July, August, and December.
So I'm just want to have a question. Is there a second for that?
Would you call on me?
For July, August, and December, there is only one meeting that's in the meeting schedule for 2021. Um, Counsel Gore, are you able to scroll all the way down to the calendar?
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, we need to look.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Counsel Randolph, did you have something to say?
I did. I had my hand up because I first wanted to bring up that October twelfth was a concern to me when I looked at the calendar. That was in addition to or a part of the agenda. And I think if we work off of that to make our motion, it might be a little easier. But October twelfth is a Tuesday, of course. And October eleventh happens to be Columbus Day. So that might, I think we need to discuss that just because it's the day after a holiday. And if we keep it, that's fine, but I just wanted to bring it up because the rest of them don't fall that close to holiday weekends or on a holiday Monday, except for that one. And then I from what I understood of Ms. Pelham's motion, she, she wanted only August and December to have one meeting.
July.
Ma'am?
July is, well.
Okay, well, let me finish because on the schedule that we were given and we should be working off of as a, as an example, July has only one meeting, August only shows one meeting, November and December. Now, I have to agree, I would prefer that July and August myself, we go ahead and do two meetings. November and December, one meeting because of all the holidays that are in and around that area and people get so busy. But I would agree on July having two meetings and also August. I know Ms. Pelham did not mention August, but I think if we want to get work done, we should put as many meetings, many of the months having two meetings versus one that we can't. If people can't make it or they know it in advance, we can all schedule around it because I have vacation too. But I'll try, try my darndest to schedule around our meetings. That's my input, but it's mainly on the July, August meeting dates, having a second one. And the October twelfth Tuesday is right after a holiday on Monday, the eleventh, Columbus Day. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, Madam City Attorney, was there a second on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. So the motion was made by Counsel Pelham and the second was made by.
Counselor Gore.
Counselor Gore, okay. All right. Counsel Pelham, I see your hand.
Yeah, I did mention August, but the, the, the history of being off in those in one, but July is so that people have a longevity as far as the one meeting in July and we wouldn't meet again until the end of, is that the end of August date?
No, the tenth.
Yeah, but it gives you one month of vacation time, basically. Or people to plan around that. That, that's the reason that we're off a month from July to August. In the past, that's, that was the intention. I did forget about December, but I did mention August earlier. So there's a substitute motion to be placed on the floor for something different, but I, I would like, I can amend my motion to. but I will like, I can amend my motion to include one meeting in July. I mean, yeah, one meeting in July. Yes, still one meeting in August and one meeting in November and December. That's my motion.
So Counselor Pelham, are you making an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
You need my motion.
You're amending your motion, okay.
To what?
I, yeah, I have my hand up.
Sorry.
Mayor Bennett.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
I'm just trying to get clarity on the motion, Counselor Pelham. You wanted to, the words I heard was to move a meeting in July. We have a July meeting, so I'm trying to understand exactly what the intent is. Is it to add another meeting or to simply move the date that is currently scheduled for the July meeting?
Oh ma'am, to leave it like it is written and just leave the schedule as it is, but have one meeting still in July, August, November, and December.
So the amended motion is simply to approve the schedule as it's presented?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Since there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
I've already seconded it.
Sorry.
It was an amendment.
Yeah, so you just asked me if I agree with the amendment since I seconded the first motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
I have my hand up again.
Counselor Randolph?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to include another date in July and August for council meetings and to make those dates two weeks after the ones listed in here. So that would be July 27th and August 24th, which are both Tuesdays, two weeks after the dates that are listed of July 13th and August 10th.
So are you, your substitute is just to add a meeting in July, for July 27th and August 24th?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Pelham, is your hand still up? Did you need to?
Oh ma'am.
All right. Ms. Robinson, is your hand still up for a reason?
No ma'am.
Okay. Your roll call, please?
I have a point of order. We're voting on her request to make a substitute motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I had to move out of the other room.
Please call roll call so we can vote whether, for the substitution.
Whether I get to make the substitution?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah.
Counselor Randolph?
I think we lost Ms. Robinson.
Fall in your room.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Gore?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham? I didn't hear you. Counselor Pelham?
No.
Thank you. Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Ayes four, noes three, ayes have it to allow the substitution. The question now, Mayor Bennett is to approve the schedule as presented and to include another date in July and August that will be two weeks after the dates that are already reflected specifically at July 27 and add August 24 to the schedule.
Yes ma'am. That's the motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion's been made by Counselor Randolph, seconded by Counselor Denton. Is there any discussion? Right, roll call, please?
Counselor Randolph?
Yes ma'am.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham? Counselor Pelham? Mayor Bennett?
Oh ma'am, no.
Yes.
Ayes four, noes three, ayes have it.
The motion has been, is passed. Moving on to SB four, Counselor Gore, are you able to scroll up to SB four? Right. Thank you. SB four is a dot resolution 2021 dash oh one regarding adverse weather or other emergency conditions. And I'm sorry to ask you again, Counselor Gore, if you could scroll all the way down to the floor? Does everyone see the resolution?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, adopting an emergency and inclement weather operation and safety policy.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Randolph. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Counselor Randolph?
Yes ma'am.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Mayor Gore, excuse me, Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Ayes seven, I, noes zero.
And that? So that will be the end of our meeting. Would there be any council that would like to say anything prior to us adjourning?
I do.
I can't get my hand raised.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton. It's going to be hard to get used to, and I want to thank Counselor Gore for her two years as mayor for running a tight meeting. And it'll take some time for all of us to adjust to not calling you Mayor Gore now and to getting used to everybody's new titles and I guess new seating positions once we get back into that. But I want to thank all of y'all for the jobs you're gonna do and the job that you did. So hopefully we can get some things done this year and, and move on with everything that we want to do as priorities. And I look forward to serving the city for another two years as we go and hopefully everything going smoothly to make this a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Counselor Pelham?
Same sentiments, congratulations to you and as mayor and Vice Mayor Parton. Thanks to the outgoing Mayor Gore and yourself as, as the leaders of the city. And hope, look forward to working with everyone again and we'll see what, go, go what we go with, I guess. Congratulations.
Thank you. Counselor Denton?
Yes, I would just like to kind of repeat what they said. Congratulations, Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton. And thank you Jasmine for your two years. I'd also like to thank our city attorney for sitting in tonight and keeping us straight. And we do appreciate that. And hopefully, one of our first order of business in the new year is to hire a new clerk. And I think we'll work hard to get that job done. I'm looking forward to the year coming up. I see great things coming about for the city of Hopewell, and I'm real excited about our moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Counselor Holloway. I would like to congratulate Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton for the position. Or I could thank Mayor Gore for everything that she has done to take the city forward.
The next hand I?
Thank you.
Next hand I see is Vice Mayor Parton.
I wanted to congratulate Mayor Bennett and also wanted to, you know, extend my same sentiments to Counselor Gore. Thank you for your time as mayor. And also wanted to thank all the members of city council for tonight, having a very good professional meeting. And I hope that this is something that we can all continue to work towards in these next several years. And thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to serve as Vice Mayor. And I'm looking forward to this leadership opportunity. Thank you.
Counselor Gore.
Yes, I was just going to say congratulations to Mayor Bennett and Vice Mayor Parton for your appointment. Looking forward to the next two years to continue the work that we started. Looking forward to actually continue some of the projects now that I have to chair the meeting so I can put more energy into that. Hope everyone has a new year, a good new year, and that we start this path off on good foot. So thank you, Ms. Robinson, for stepping in to help us throughout the process as well.
Thank you ma'am, my pleasure.
And I would like to congratulate Vice Mayor Parton. And thank you all for your support in this role. Counselor Gore, former Mayor Gore, I would like to say that there are some big energy shoes I need to fill. And, you know, thank you for all you've done in the past two years. And with that, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for stepping in today. And like you said, our next order of business is to find a clerk. And if, Ms. Robinson, are you able to do the roll calls?
We don't have a motion to adjourn on the table nor a second at this time.
Okay.
When we adjourn?
Was that Ms. Pelham that seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, couldn't, couldn't tell, I'm sorry.
The motion was made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there a roll call?
Counselor Randolph?
Yes, please.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
No.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes. Thank you, the meeting has ended.